Good afternoon and welcome to the April 3 meeting of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors. My name is Meg Bomke, I'm chairman and represent the Falmouth District. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
And Mr. Snellens.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a pro- quorum.
Thank you. The only addition to the agenda is the presentation to Stafford Hospital. May I have a motion in a second to approve the regular agenda?
Send it.
All right, any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. And with that, Stafford Hospital celebrates its ninth anniversary this year. The hospital founded by Mary Washington Healthcare has served Stafford residents with cutting-edge technology and personnel. The hospital hosts many outreach programs, health and wellness programs, and art contests for children. It is a model business citi- excuse me, it is a model business citizen and provides many jobs to Stafford citizens. To date, the hospital has delivered over 6,000 babies, cared for over 290,000 patients in the emergency department, and served 50,000 inpatients. And now, if we could please have Ms. Kathy Oblonsky, the Executive Director, please join Mrs. Shelton at the podium.
Come on Kathy. 6,000 babies.
I did not do it myself.
Okay. It's a lot of babies. So, that's too many for me to take care of. I can take. A proclamation to recognize and commend Stafford Hospital and Mary Washington Healthcare on Stafford Hospital's ninth anniversary. Whereas this year marks the ninth anniversary of the founding of Stafford Hospital by Mary Washington Healthcare, and whereas the citizens of Stafford County and the surrounding area have significantly benefited from the mission of Stafford Hospital to improve the health of the people in the communities they serve. And whereas to date, the hospital's delivered, we said this, 6,000 babies and cared for over 290,000 patients in the emergency department, and served over 50,000 inpatients, and whereas Stafford Hospital is a valuable community partner, assisting Stafford as a pulse point community partner with identifying the locations of automatic external defibrillate- did I say that?
Defibrillator.
Thank you. And whereas the hospital continues to be on the cutting edge of technology, providing an elevated level of healthcare and expertise in the county. It is one of only 10 hospitals in Virginia to be designated as a center of excellence in minimally invasive gynecology by the Surgical Review Corporation, and whereas Stafford Hospital has enriched the community with wellness programs, special events, and the annual Stafford Hospital 5K. And whereas Stafford Hospital provides several jobs to Stafford citizens and is a model business citizen. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this third day of April, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend Stafford Hospital on its ninth anniversary for its invaluable service to Stafford County.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Kathy, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Just a few.
I know. You know, part of Mary Washington Healthcare and the reason why Stafford Hospital was here, because it is so important for Stafford County to be able to take care of our community. And having a hospital there was really that piece that when, you know, we knew we needed to expand, we knew this was the county that we wanted to work in, in the community, was so open and willing to welcome us. And for the past nine years, our goal has always been just to have our county be very proud and our citizens be proud of what we do, and take care of each other. So, I'm honored that you gave this to us, and I'm looking for another 100 years to go, so, but thank you very much. Thank you.
So while Ms. Shelton's coming up, I'll just say my son was one of the 290,000 in the emergency room in 2009, when they first opened, when he got cleated with a cleat at a baseball game, sliding, slapping a tag on somebody at second base. So, and I remember, we never saw the physician, it was an assistant, and it was a woman, and she did a phenomenal job, and he doesn't have a scar to this day. So, there's your testament. Okay, and then just reminding everybody that we do have the 5K at Stafford Hospital coming up on April 14th. I know some of you have already signed up. All right, with that, today we also have Ms. Kelly Hale, who's the Drug Court Administrator, and she's here today to give a presentation on the proposed expansion of the Drug Court. Drug Court is a positive, innovative, and cost-effective approach to dealing with individuals who have a substance abuse problem and are involved in the court system. This program targets individuals with addiction problems, but not drug dealers or violent offenders. The program is an intensive outpatient, three-phased approach to substance abuse treatment, which lasts approximately one year. It targets, targets both adult and juvenile offenders. And with that, Ms. Hale, welcome to the, to the dais and to the podium, and if you could now share with us, so we could become more educated about the Drug Court.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, all of you, for allowing me the time to talk about one of my very favorite subjects. I've been with Drug Court for almost 18 years, and next to my family, it is my favorite topic. Today, you will learn a little bit about-
Ms. Hale, could you bring your microphone up, just so everybody watching at home can hear you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Today, you will learn a little bit about the history of Drug Court, about the Rappahannock Regional Drug Court, and about the potential expansion into Stafford. The first Drug Court was established in Miami, Dade County, Florida. They opened their doors in 1989. Tired of the same faces and the same cases repeatedly appearing before the court, a visionary group of justice professionals decided the system, as it existed, was broken, and that there had to be a better way. Drug Court, as was noted, is an intensive program that lasts a minimum of one year for court-involved adults that suffer from substance dependence. The Rappahannock Regional Drug Court was established in 1998. We serve currently Fredericksburg, Stafford, Spotsylvania, and King George. It is a program that was designed to help nonviolent offenders that are drug-addicted, that have committed felony-level offenses, and that, as was also noted, that we don't accept drug dealers, no felony assaults, no rape, robbery. We currently have a capacity of 90 participants. Question number one, how does someone get into Drug Court? Well, they commit one of those felonies. Those that are perhaps possession schedule one or two, perhaps it was theft, anything that's nonviolent. They go to their attorney and they say, "I have a problem with drugs," or, by review of their case, their attorney sees that there's a pattern here, and maybe they need to talk to their client, perhaps they can acknowledge that there is a drug problem. Together, they decide that Drug Court might be the best option for them, and they go to the Commonwealth Attorney, and that's key. The Commonwealth Attorney must agree to a Drug Court referral. After that's done, they contact the Drug Court Office and the referral is made, demographic information is collected, criminal history information is collected, so that we can do a review to make sure that they meet all of our eligibility requirements. After that, a clinical assessment is done. That assessment takes anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours. We review earliest childhood moments, any adverse childhood traumatic experiences, any traumas that may have taken place as an adult. We review their substance dependence. We have to declare each participant as substance-dependent. This is not just a program for abusers, this is a program for people that are dependent on drugs and/or alcohol. During that time, we also review our program in full, so that the person can make an informed decision. We let them know that they're going to be in court every single Monday. We review the group schedule, we review absolutely every aspect of the program. If that person decides, yes, I want to go, I want to be in Drug Court, they go back to court, everyone agrees, and they sign a plea agreement. At that time, the person understands that if they were to complete Drug Court, the outcome typically would be that their felony-level offense is dismissed. Unfortunately, they also understand, or fortunately, because it's very important, what would happen if they did not successfully complete the program. So what does your life look like when you enter Drug Court? Many years ago, I used to do the clinical assessments, and what I would tell them is that they're going to feel like Drug Court is their entire life, and in reality, for the most part, we are. As I noted, they're in court every single Monday, they are in group three times a week, they are providing scheduled and random urine drug screens three to six times a week. They must attend community support group meetings, they have to have a sponsor, they have to work full-time, a minimum of 30 hours per week. There are graduated sanctions for every program violation, and that can range from having to write a paper, to doing community service work, to spending brief periods of time at the Rappahannock Regional Jail. On a positive note, we also provide incentives. Research states that the rapport that our participants build with our judges ranks highly with their success. So one of our incentives is simple praise from the judge. We also provide certificates, the serenity prayer when appropriate, all the way to gift cards to Walmart or Pizza Hut. Initially, when someone decides to enter the Rappahannock Regional Drug Court, they do so, the motivation is to avoid jail time, or to have that felony dismissed. In most cases, upon successful completion, that's what happens, the felony that was referred to Drug Court is dismissed. Our hope is that through the group process of evidence-based practices, motivational interviewing, and cognitive behavioral treatment modalities such as moral recognition therapy, that that external motivation will change to internal motivation, and that's when the true and everlasting changes take place. They want to lead a recovery lifestyle, they want to be the best father, wife, husband, mother that they possibly can be, they want to be productive members of our society. It's not easy to successfully complete our program, it takes hard work and determination. Our end goal is to introduce recovery lifestyle into their lives, to reduce recidivism and other drug-related crimes, and to help our participants, as I noted, become productive members of our society. The Stafford docket, why would we need it? Why would we need to expand into Stafford when the Rappahannock Regional already allows people from Stafford to come into our program? In 1998, when we started, our capacity was at 50. We quickly hit our ceiling. Our team, understanding that our community had a greater need, came together and decided to increase our capacity from 50 to 65. And that was great, but unfortunately, we quickly hit the ceiling again. The team came together one more time and said, "We don't have any more staff, we don't have more money, we need to help our community, we see the need, we are going to expand capacity to 90." We did that, and quickly, we're hitting that same ceiling again, to the point that approximately every nine months, we would have to go into a referral shutdown. We would continue to operate, but we could not take any new referrals, which meant no new participants. In January of 2017, LaBravia Jenkins, Commonwealth Attorney, was tired of having to go into routine shutdowns of referrals, and a new system was created, and that system allowed a particular number of participants per jurisdiction. Unfortunately, that system has allowed us to not go into closures every nine months, however, it could close a certain jurisdiction for a period of time, if they met their capacity, the number of people that they were allowed to have in our program. What would the Stafford docket look like? We would be able to serve an additional 40 to 60 participants, which would open spaces in the Rappahannock Regional. It would increase our total capacity of participants served in our region. The approximate cost at this point is $265,523. What we are doing is seeking grants, searching grants. Based on history, I'm anticipating a Bureau of Justice Administration grant to come out any day now. We are hoping that, based on history again, the grant announcement will include $100,000 for a period of three years. If the BJA grant is tied to a SAMPA grant, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, that monies would increase exponentially. Again, we are just hoping, this is an extremely competitive grant, they are extremely competitive grants, I believe, with my 18-year history and our proven success of the Rappahannock Regional, that we would be a viable candidate. We will review the grants, make sure that they do meet our philosophy and our needs, and if possible, we will be applying for them. We have done a cost avoidance analysis a couple different ways. In October of 2017, Stafford had 31 participants. We pulled the plea agreements for each of those 31 participants to find out how much it would cost if they weren't in Drug Court, and at that point, the cost was $501,872.16. The jail also did kind of a cost avoidance study where they just looked at people that have one charge from each jurisdiction, and looked at a six-month stay in jail, that would have been $436,565. Unfortunately, a lot of our participants come to us with more than one charge, and we're not looking at just a six-month stay. Are there any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Hale? Ms. Mauer?
Can you provide those statistics to our clerk? I was trying to write them down-
I would be happy to.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
All right. So I have a question, for those people that come to Drug Court on Mondays, they obviously have to work with their employers, or maybe they're working their 30 days, what do you find in the community, how are employers receptive to their employees being in Drug Court?
When they're, when they're assessed, we review their entire schedule with them, so we let them know when they'll be in court on Mondays, what their group schedule will be. So if they are currently employed, they can immediately go to them and say, "Hey, this is, this is what I'm facing." A lot of our participants come to us unemployed, and so during the job search process, they explain their, the requirements of the program, and at that point, they have to make sure that, that those employers would be okay with that amount of time being out of the, out of the office or out of the establishment.
Okay. So, and my other question is, and you might not have this at your fingertips, what's the percentage of those over the last, well, since 1998, that have started the program and finished?
55%.
55, okay, and you may have said that, and I missed it.
I don't think I did.
Oh, okay. All right.
How many of them ended up back in, in the court system? Of those 55%?
That I don't know. The Supreme Court tracks that statistic, and that's not something that I have.
Okay.
I can say that when compared to our success rates of 55%, when we look at the national average at a comparison study, our statistics are far greater, which is typically 20 to 30% success versus our 55%.
And then also, I have one other question, you mentioned a certain amount of money, 365? 265,000? So what would Stafford's share be of that? Because that would be for the region, correct?
The 265 would be the cost of the expansion, so that would be the cost to Stafford.
Okay.
The current operating cost for the Rappahannock Regional is over $500,000.
Okay. All right. All right, great. Well, thank you very much.
Hi, Mr. Cavalier.
And as a member, as you remember, on the Jail Authority Board, and just recently, I've only been to two meetings, and Ms. Hale was kind enough to, to brief us at the last meeting regarding this topic, and then agreed to come to, to our board, because it's been very enlightening for me, at least. And I also wanted to mention that we had a meeting, Mr. Foley and I, and Sheriff Decatur, with Judge Willis and Judge Sharp on this particular issue, and they're both very big proponents of this. And, and you know, I think Ms., Judge Willis's position on this, but Judge Sharp was very pointed, and when he briefed us, he said that initially, he was a huge skeptic of, of this program, and, but now, he, he's one of the biggest supporters, because he believes that it has worked. And so I, I think it's, it's a small investment for us to make for a big payoff, and I, I hope we go forward with this program. Thank you, Ms. Hale.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Just, you may not have the statistic, but the reciduity rate in general, I mean, you have a 55% success rate, but isn't the, the reciduity rate nationwide around, in the high 80s to low 90s?
Right. I, I don't have that statistic. What I can do is contact the Supreme Court and provide an update with that information.
Yeah, our board loves to look at data, so any additional data that you have would be great.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Ms. Mauer?
And of the 265,000 for Stafford's share, you said that that would increase Stafford's participants 40 to 60, or regionally 40 to 60?
Regionally, because we would not lose the 90 from the, the first program, from the classic Rappahannock Regionals. So we would have 90 participants being served for Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania, and King George.
Okay.
And another 40 to 60 being served in Stafford.
Okay.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the materials you left here for us.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your presentation.
All right, thank you.
And thank you, Judge Willis, for coming along. Okay, with that, we're going to go into presentations by the public. If you would like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and to board members. It's also important for you to keep track of your time at the podium. The board would like to stay on schedule and give all interested individuals a chance to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speak into the microphone slowly, clearly, and loudly. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your presentation, yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and of course, red indicates that your presentation time is complete. And with that, I do have one speaker card today, and that's Mr. Gregory Gavin.
Hi, my name's Gregory D. Gavin, 242 Stony Hill Road in Hartwood. Dear members, I'd like to speak today about the agreement between Stafford County and VDOT that allows for local enforcement of Virginia Code 33 dot 2 dash 1224, which prohibits the placement of signs and advertising within the roadway. I am pleased to report on the positive impact that the agreement has had on our community here in Hartwood. The sign, first slide, please. The sign at the intersection of Kellogg Mill and Mountainville Roads has been removed. There it is, next slide, please. It's been removed. Next slide, please. The sign at the intersection of Kellogg Mill and Mount Olive has been removed. Next slide, please. There it is, it's been removed. All the illegal signs that I reported to you in December 2017 have been removed. At the same time, I'm pleased to report that according to Jeff Harvey, Stafford County's zoning director, we've collected an additional $800 in fees for 2018, on top of the $1,200 of fines that we collected in 2017. It's a total of $2,000 of new revenue, new revenue for the county. This is excellent. I'd like to thank Ms. Harvey, Mr. Harvey and Stafford zoning manager Susan Blackburn for their efforts. I don't know if they're here, but thank you very much. You could take that down, please. I'd like others, I would like to encourage others listening to take part in the program. Report repeated violators by taking a picture with one cellphone and sending it to Ms. Blackburn's email, including the date and address. It will be well-received by our staff, and the signs will be removed in a reasonable amount of time. It's a great way to look out for your neighborhood, it raises money, and it serves as a prime example for others to follow. Second, I'd like to stress the importance of keeping Stafford's roads beautiful and litter-free. Lisa Butler and her staff at our board work tirelessly, day in and day out, picking up trash throughout the county roads. It makes a tremendous difference in the quality of life for me and my fellow citizens here in Hartwood. We can help Ms. Butler and help ourselves by lending a hand and cleaning our own roads. There was a window of opportunity to clean right now, there's a window of opportunity to clean right now, when the spring weather is nice and before the poison ivy grows. If you call our board office, Ms. Butler will give you for free these blue bags.
Computer, please.
And arrange for pickup of the bags after you fill them with trash. The effort is really quite simple, rewarding, and again, serves as a prime example for others to follow. Next slide, please. On Stony Hill Road and at Lake Curtis, I pick up the trash. I pick up the trash. I call Lisa Butler and her staff picks up the blue bags. My road looks great. Hartwood looks beautiful, especially in the spring. Let's keep Hartwood beautiful. Let's keep Stafford beautiful. Let's keep America beautiful. Please join me in keeping our roads clean and clear of signs and litter-free. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin, for advertising for the R Board today. Wonderful. Okay, would anybody else like to speak to the board?
Paul Wodowsky, Picket Lane. Here's some data on my shirt. Yesterday was due after Easter in Buffalo, New York. I wish I could filibuster this board. Ted Cruz would be proud of me. I'll add one more whereas for your Stafford Hospital, they're a cutting-edge, all right. They cut my stomach and my artery in 2013. They're a cutting-edge. Stafford Meadows, 218, family zoning, R13, water and sewer, vote 11-0. Mr. Limerick was the chairman of the subdivision committee. This was in meetings on 3-3 and 3-7, 1981. Also in the county, it changed from multi-family to 218 apartments on 4-7, 1981. The vote was eight to one. Mr. Poppen, maybe someone who graduated in 1965, might know who that is, voted no, because it wasn't a sufficient green area. Sounds to me like they didn't know what cluster subdivisions were. Then on R82-341, those of you who weren't in the Air Force don't know what a 341 is, but it's a mistake. It got passed for 218 apartments, the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval, and on 6-1, 1982, the Board of Supervisors approved it. Now, someone made a mistake by letting 143 townhouses get built from '83 to '87, and conferring with an attorney, he said probably the market changed it from apartments to townhouses. Amazing. 66 apartments were built in '88 to '89, and as you know, none of us get a water and sewer bill, and it's 35 years for those townhouses built in 1983. Also, all the properties are not listed in acres, they're at 0.000 acres. I will be meeting with the Board of Equalization to prove once again that some of these assessors who've been doing things have been raising taxes on people who are teachers, single moms, blue-collar workers, people living payday-to-payday. Now, the Director of Utilities, present and past, don't bring us into the, into the system. Well, bring us in with a CIP. And let me close by saying, it is nice to be important as a member of the Board of Supervisors. However, it's more important to be nice to the citizens who need a water bill.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the Board of Supervisors? Anybody in the board chambers? Okay, with that, I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board for our board reports. Mr. Cavalier?
Just quickly, I attended the- Just quickly, I attended the ribbon cutting ceremony, Orange Fitness, Orange Theory Fitness facility in Dockstone, and that's a high-end boutique-type, high-energy gym, basically, with state-of-the-art equipment in there, and I think it will fit nicely within our community, and we welcome them and congratulate them and wish them well. I also would like to pull item number six from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. First, I'd like to extend some praise to the Sheriff's Department, as well as Fire and Rescue, for the search of the missing lady that was in my area over the weekend. They've worked very tirelessly. The reverse 911 system worked excellently. In fact, many citizens were out hunting around, looking for her as well, and so, it just is excellent to see what terrific staff we have and that they rise to situations such as this. I attended the Rappahannock River Basin meeting. There are numerous items that are awaiting the governor's signature or veto, so I'll wait on going over any of those until we know definitively what's happening. One item that came up is that the Friends of the Rappahannock have developed a report card for the Rappahannock, and so, I'll probably be talking to the other board members to see if they would like to have a briefing on that or some information sent to them so they can understand how that is supposed to work. Next, I attended the Fire and Rescue Awards. It was a great honor to see our volunteers and our staff get recognized for the excellent work that they do in protecting and serving our community. Lastly, this morning, I toured, not only did I get to meet with the sheriff, but I toured the Social Services Department, saw the amazing work that they do daily to meet a rising need in our community, which is people who are having various social needs. And so, that was an eye-opening, and it was great to see them in their option. Thank you.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Thank you. One thing I've noticed, probably more so since I was on the board the last time, is that the social media lights up with rumors all the time, and many of those rumors are embellished or not true. So, what I'll try and do over some time is I try and inform those various blogs of the difficulty or the problem or what the status actually is. So, just quickly, I'll tell you that I met with the developers of the Embry Mill Project and the mine road completion, all the way from 610 all the way down to Courthouse Road. I have a guarantee, they will complete that by March of next year, and that's at least one year earlier than we'd originally expected. So, and that'll alleviate some problems in other neighboring neighborhoods. I've heard that the Garrisonville, the Garrison, which is the regal theater and the restaurants and that commercial development on 610 is dead, because people don't see the construction tractors and stuff out there. I can tell you emphatically that the project is not dead, that the developer is as anxious as we are to get started. As you can imagine, there are a million details in the middle of this thing. We met, the county and I, with that developer just last week, and that project will be moving forward as fast as we can keep pushing it forward. Also, the completion of the 610 widening project will happen by the end of June. That's with the contractor. A lot of people want to know why we haven't taken down the barrels that are there yet. They're up there for safety, and until the contractor turns the road back over to VDOT, we will not be able to take those barrels down. There's a matter of liability. So, please bear with us. In a few more months, we'll have all of that taken care of. Ms. Yublonsky asked, or, you know, she hoped we were proud of Stafford Hospital, and I can tell you, we are proud of Stafford Hospital. I can remember when we first started working on getting the hospital here, and I've said many times that I think it is the single biggest quality-of-life improvement in the history of Stafford County, and I've thought of that many, over many years, and I still can't come up with anyone that's bigger or better than that. So, thank you very much for the hospital and the service they provide. The last thing I want to talk about is last Thursday night, we had a traffic accident that involved two teenagers. A young lady was driving. She hadn't had her driver's license a year. The passenger in that car was killed, and it's a, I think he was, they were students at Mountain View High School, and it's tragic to lose a child like that. And my heart goes out to the parents, kind of been there and done that, and I know that they'll have a long recovery, and it'll be hard for them. I asked all the community to reach out to them. They're hurting very badly now. There's also been some social media comments that were derogatory toward the young driver, and I would say, anyone out there who doesn't think that this could happen to you, our teenagers are notorious texters and phone call, making cellphone calls and stuff now. She made a mistake. It resulted in a tragic accident. She'll have to live with that for the rest of her life. So, I ask everyone to be patient with her and forgiving as she tries to put her life back together again. So, my heart goes out to the family. It reminds me of what got me started in politics and why it's so important to me that we work and continue to make progress on our roads. I'll be coming forward with some proposals shortly as part of budget and future that I hope will help us with some of those problems. I'm not the only one working on that, by the way. I mean, the board total, in whole, believes that we need to do more in the area of road and road safety. We can't rest on our laurels, because we have over a billion dollars worth of road projects on 1995. This accident occurred in the extreme western part of the county on a small road. Speed was involved. So, again, my heart goes out to the family and ask any, if there are any teenagers, which I can't believe too many of them are watching this, but please, please remember that, you know, if you have an accident and you leave this world, you leave behind parents who care and love for you very much, and you'll shatter their lives, along with many other negative things that happen. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Mauer.
Well, a couple of things. First, I want to thank everybody from Ms. Cobb's class at Rock Hill Elementary School. This really warmed my heart. I read for the class several weeks ago, and they sent me these lovely thank-you cards, and I truly appreciate it. And to both families of the tragic accident that was on Mountain View Road. My daughter was friends with both of them, and she just saw the hospital. The young lady is doing well, at least physically, but emotionally, spiritually, mentally, we all need to pray for her. And having a teenager on those roads is hard, and just please be careful, please watch out for the family, please be kind. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Ms. Shelton.
Since I talked to you guys last, I'm finishing up the VACO's Planning Commissioners Course and the Supervisor Course to teach me, as a new person, how to understand land management and not drive staff totally crazy with all my questions and my fellow supervisors. I also attended VACO Supervisor Forum down in Richmond for two days. That was an excellent forum where supervisors from all across Virginia's counties, both new people and chairman, attend, and I kind of found out that everyone has the same kind of challenges we do. Finally, just yesterday, I went with the Utilities Department for Stafford County, and we went out to Smith Lake and did a wonderful tour of the Quaya Sewage Plant, and I got to tell you, that was really eye-opening, and I really, really appreciate all the work that those people do. We take it for granted that our water is always going to be there, and you really have to go and to have an understanding of how much work and effort that is from our staff. Last thing I wanted to do is today's CDC meeting, I was able to produce the information that the Roundtable did and some work that they had done to look at conditional use permits for drive-through. I want to thank them for all the work that they've done, and just remind people that I have a Roundtable at the hospital downstairs every Thursday, oh, excuse me, I said that wrong, the fourth Thursday of every month. Thank you very much.
Mr. Snellings.
I'll defer.
Ms. Bomke.
Thank you. I attended a ribbon cutting at Amish by Design down on Route 1, just south of the RV Center Past Potomac Creek Road, and it was an old business, and they've renovated the parking lot in the building, and they are selling all kinds of sheds and picnic tables and really beautiful chairs for your outside patio. And so, if you're interested in that kind of furniture, please stop by. They have a great product. It's coming out of Pennsylvania. And also, I want to mention that their sheds are, you can finance them. So, if you're interested in one of their sheds for your backyard, just remember that they can finance that for you if you need that. Also, I want to mention that I did attend the Fine Arts Festival over at Brookpoint, and as you all know, we could stay in there for a whole day, looking at all the artwork. It's always so phenomenal. But I did listen to the third graders that all came together in the county, the chorus, the third-grade chorus kids, and they were great. It just brought back a lot of memories from when my kids were in elementary school. Also, attended the Fire and Rescue Awards, and just want to say congratulations to all the career and the volunteers that were there, and all those that received special commendations for different acts of service that they completed. Just want to remind our board members and anybody in the community, if you're interested in attending the Stafford Hospital 5K Run on April 14th, you can go to the Stafford Hospital website and sign up, and I believe it starts at 8:30 in the morning, and it is on the hospital grounds. And lastly, I had a town hall meeting with Mr. Dayton, was so kind to come out on traffic calming over on Edwards Drive in Grafton Village, and we have, we do need a few more ballots, about 25 more ballots from people. They keep trickling in, and then some people brought their ballots to the meeting, but basically, we're trying to put speed tables in there where it's a major cut-through road over to Grafton on, excuse me, over to White Oak Road over by the Giant, and we just need people to slow down. People have a tendency to just drive too fast, especially in our neighborhoods, whether they're old or new. So, thank you for those people that did come out for the town hall. We're working on getting those additional ballots collected.
And with that, I'm going to bring it back to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. McLendon, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foley.
Yes, Madam Chair, just a couple of quick items. Did want you to know that we are nearing completion of the process to fill three vacant department head positions. We, in a few minutes, will be providing you with an update in closed session on the process for the Fire Rescue Chief. We are completing the process over the next couple of weeks for our Public Works Director and also of our Economic Development Director. So, hopefully, the next meeting, we will provide you with an update on those two positions as well, and some recommendations for hiring. I will, would did want to mention that these vacancies are challenging for the rest of staff, and just wanted to mention the folks that have stepped up during this period, and hopefully, this will be over very soon. Keith Dayton in Public Works has certainly done a great job for us in this interim period. Rick Cobert in Economic Development has been filling in in the interim, and Joe Granger and Roger Sutherland, our two Assistant Fire Chiefs, have been carrying the load, not to mention that we have another Assistant Fire Chief position to fill after we get the Fire Chief himself onboard. So, lots going on there, along with the budget process, many hours spent by staff in interviews and so forth. And the other thing, I have provided you with the County Administrator's Priority Initiatives Report, and we wanted to focus today, just for a couple of minutes, on a major effort that's underway for the development of downtown Stafford, something we've worked on a good bit over the past year. And one of my deputies is going to come up and just give you a quick overview. Next week, we have a tour scheduled for some other downtowns in the metro DC area that we think are good examples of how Stafford's may come up out of the ground and become that place that we are all hoping for, and in addition to those, we're hoping it will lead us to a vision for the future and also a master plan that will move us forward. So, I'm going to let Fred give you a quick overview of that, Madam Chair.
Chairman Bob, members of the board, Fred Presley, Deputy County Administrator. I do just want to provide a brief update. We talked a little bit about this Infrastructure Committee, but as you all know, we did hire Stan Tech, our Development Advisor, to assist us with this process. We are well along our way in that process right now. The immediate task that they've been working on for the last few months is on the data gathering and the market analysis piece, which is going to be critical as we move this forward to see what is realistic, what can we really develop here in downtown Stafford. So, that part of the process is nearing completion. They'll be issuing a report on that very soon. As part of that as well, they're going to be doing a facilities assessment, and that is with respect to what we, as county administration, and the courts, and all of our other arms, utilities, and others need for space, both now and 20 years into the future, to see if there might be an opportunity to incorporate some of that into this ultimate build-out of a downtown Stafford that we do, so that we're not leasing as much space as we're doing, and just trying to find efficiencies there. We spoke at the Infrastructure Committee also about the courthouse analysis, about what we're actually going to do with the physical building, the courthouse. We do have an architect onboard, the same architect that designed the current plans in the CIP, and we've asked them to take another look at that, but this time in the context of downtown Stafford, because when they did that before, they did not do that. They did not look at downtown Stafford. So, that does present some opportunities for synergies and perhaps ways we can work with the development across the street, across courthouse, to accommodate some of the parking requirements that we have as both the courts and county administration build out. So, there will be additional parking needs. That was the major limiter with their previous look at this in terms of the courthouse, which is why they moved it across the street. If you take that equation, that parking issue off the table, and say, we might be able to provide that parking across the street in a mixed-use development, it really opens up the possibilities over here, and it's important to think about this site here as part of the downtown. In fact, it's going to be a key focus of the downtown. So, Courthouse Road, once we take away this interchange and move it up the Route 1 a little bit, it becomes a slower road. It becomes a more walkable road, and this site, along with the new development across the street, becomes the downtown, and Courthouse becomes kind of that main trunk line feeding that downtown. So, there's a real, lot of opportunity here, so we've asked the architects to take a fresh look at that, and they'll be providing that to us. So, we're looking at getting that information over the next few months. So, between April and May, we'll be coming back to the Infrastructure Committee, meeting with the users groups on multiple occasions, and that users groups are the courts themselves, the clerks, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and the Sheriff's Office, to talk about how this new location might work in the context of this new development. Additionally, as Administrator Foley mentioned, we do have a tour that's on schedule for April 10th, and the purpose of that tour is to get board members and members of our staff, the Planning Department, and others to go and take a look at the DC metro area, areas where this has been done in recent years, so that we can get a feel for different styles and different types of things that we have a potential to do here, because it's critical, as we begin the visioning process, to say that you all are aligned in what it is we're trying to create here. You know, it's probably not Fairfax. It might be something more like Rockville, Maryland, or something else. So, but we're going to look at several of those, so that you have the context to create your opinion and provide that back to the Development Advisors, so that we can move this project forward. So, that tour happens on the 10th, and we will continue with the outreach and visioning piece of that with the public, once we've done that. And so, there'll be more public outreach as part of the master plan process, which follows as we develop this, because it's critical that we get a clear vision and then create scenarios and renderings that we can then provide to potential developers to say, this is what we want to partner to create. The final step of that is that developer piece. So, the consultant will then take all that information and create performance, create scenarios, create a full development offering package that we will then put out in an RFP and ask for a partner in this development. So, I think it's a very exciting time right now, and, you know, all this, you know, we've been talking about this for years in Stafford, and it goes back to 2006, 2009, there were plans done. So, this is a fresh look at this, but a lot of action behind it, so happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Presley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foley. All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the board for the consent agenda, everything minus number six. All right, any discussion? All right, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Cavalier, number six.
Madam Chairman, I'm familiar with the project, I'm just not familiar with this particular facet. I haven't been briefed on it yet, so I'd like to hear a short briefing from our staff on this.
All right, looks like Mr. Dayton is coming forward.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Cavalier, the project to extend improvements along Juggins Road past the Perry Farms subdivision begins at Chadwick and takes out that double, very sharp curve, and then enters school property for the balance of the improvement. So there's one very short section of easement and right-of-way that was required to straighten the road out to state standards. This is owned by the HOA. We had had a communication with their management company very early on. They were very much inclined to dedicate the right-of-way and easements necessary for the project, but they had a procedural matter in that of the 100, just over 100 dwellings in Perry Farms, the way their rules stated, they needed two-thirds approval. And after many months, they've been able to secure 42, and they did find six that voted against. At this point, we're unable to, we've been unable to move it forward any further. We are a bit anxious in that we need to clear the right-of-way in order to get utilities moved out of the way. That would happen over the course of the summer and fall and put us in a position to construct. So while the conversations have been very congenial, because of procedural requirements within that neighborhood itself, we've just been unable to get over the top and get that dedicated to us.
Question is, are you sure it's, they need two-thirds of the entire 100, or do they need two-thirds vote of a quorum to pass that?
Their attorney interpreted their bylaws to say two-thirds of the residents within Perry Farms were required to approve it. So we're going off of that opinion, and we've asked for it twice and gotten the same answer both times.
Right. If I could, I'd like to help on this, and I know some of the people over there in this, and I think I could either help get the necessary signatures or at least clear up this matter, so I think that it could become a lot easier if it's two-thirds of the quorum, which is more common than two-thirds of the total number of units in my experiences.
That would be fine. That's, we'll proceed that way if that's what you wish.
Sure. I mean, I'm okay, you know, I, what's the timetable on this? Do we need this, to do this quickly because of the Juggins Road project? I'm aware of that with the school completion and everything.
So, Mr. Cavalier, what you have in front of you would be authorization to advertise for a public hearing. We are not yet in a posture where we could come back to you with the public hearing, and what we are just about to do is give them another bona fide offer. We had to make a slight change in the acquisition documents. Initially, we had a permanent street easement, and that's being converted to right-of-way, and we had to change the 95% of that valuation to 100% to reflect the right-of-way. So we are just about to issue another bona fide offer. So in reality, right now, we couldn't come back to the board with the actual public hearing and the formal action until the May 15th meeting. So we have about 45 days to work. If it was the board's pleasure to go ahead and authorize a public hearing, we wouldn't even advertise it till right around the first of May, and that gives us almost the entire month of April to work through that.
Do we have time to wait a meeting before we authorize a public hearing, do you think?
Certainly, we have, we can wait. We can defer the action if that's...
I'd like to go that route and get involved in this, to tell you the truth. I wish I would have been involved earlier, but I think, you know, I might be able to help here, and I'd rather do it this way than the heavy-handed way, so.
Absolutely, yes. We absolutely have that much time.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to defer this.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dudenheffer, any discussion?
Just, I served on an HOA board, and it's very common on those HOAs up in North Stafford and the ones I've ever had any dealings with up there, which are several, that two-thirds vote is pretty common to make a change such as selling off common property. The problem with getting the signatures doesn't usually or isn't associated with the fact that people don't want to do it, it's that they have now renters that are in the property and trying to track down an owner, an absentee owner, and, you know, to get them to do it, usually maybe overseas. I mean, they could be almost anywhere with our heavy military population. So many of the HOAs, and I would assume this one, have trouble getting anything of substance done because they have very difficult trying to get the two-thirds majority of the homeowners, not the residents, the homeowners, to pony up for this, so.
All right, so we have a motion to defer in a second. Any more discussion? Okay, cast your vote to defer. Tally the vote. Motion will be deferred. Okay, with that, Mr. Snellings, would you please lead us into closed session?
Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for, one, discussion of the award of a public contract to construct and operate a fieldhouse sports facility involving the expenditure of public funds, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board. Two, discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board. Three, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating posture of the board. And four, discussion regarding recruitment for the department head position in the Fire and Rescue Department, whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, comma, 3, comma, 7, and 29, such discussion may occur in closed meeting.
All right, all in favor, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Okay, the board is now in closed session. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to certify?
So move.
All right, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. And now, Mr. Foley, do we have an announcement?
Yes, Madam Chairman, after review at the board, I'm very pleased to announce the hiring of Joseph Cordello as the county's next Chief of Fire and Emergency Medical Services. Joe comes to Stafford from Prince George's County, Maryland, and their Department of Fire and EMS, where he is currently the Deputy Chief and has more than 28 years of fire service experience. Joe has extensive experience at the command staff level in Prince George's County, the largest combined volunteer career fire and EMS department in the country. I know that you all were very interested in strengthening the bond between our volunteer and career members as we move forward with population growth that we're experiencing. Joe certainly stood out among all the candidates as the best qualified, and we think we've really gotten someone who's going to be exceptional in working with our system going forward. Prince George's County, Maryland, has 45 fire stations and more than 800 career and 1,000 volunteer personnel, and responds to more than 145,000 calls for service annually. Joe started there as a firefighter, worked through as a battalion chief, assistant fire chief, and then finally as deputy chief. He is a recipient of the Bronze Medal of Valor in 2004. He holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Maryland in fire science, and within the next eight or nine months or so, he will have completed his work towards a master's degree in organizational leadership at Johns Hopkins University. His understanding of a combination system is second to none compared to the pool that we had of over 53 applicants across the country. Madam Chairman, members of board, I'm very pleased to announce the hiring of Joseph Cordello as our next Chief of Fire and Rescue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foley, for your leadership on that, as well as everybody else that was on the team. I know that was a tremendous amount of work finding the right candidate for someone here in Stafford, and it sounds like we are successful. So thank you very much. And with that, the meeting is adjourned until 7 o'clock when we have a public hearing. Thank you. Could you please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance? Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today to do the business of Stafford County. We pray for your guidance and wisdom as we discuss the matters before us. Lord, we also pray for the students that were injured and passed in the recent car accident in the Mountain View School community. We pray and give comfort for the families that were involved in this, and please wrap your arms around them as they mourn this tragic event that happened, and please continue to comfort and support both of these families in their days ahead. Merciful Father, we also thank you for our first responders who protect our Stafford citizens, and we thank you for the men and women in uniform who serve our country so we can have our freedom each and every day. As we salute our flag, let us remember it signifies purity, innocence, valor, bravery, vigilance, perseverance, and justice for all. Thank you for being their strength and their hope, and we pray that you continue to keep all of our first responder, first responders near and dear to our hearts. In your name we pray, amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have public presentations by the public. We have opened an overflow room upstairs, but it doesn't look like we need it at this point in time. We appreciate your patience as we make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. If you would like to make a comment, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and to board members. It is important for you to keep track of your time at the podium. The board would like to stay on schedule and give all interested individuals a chance to speak. If you spoke about an item during the afternoon session, you may not speak about that same item again this evening. If you wish to speak about the item scheduled for public hearing, which is the budget in the CIP tonight, you can hold your comments until that item comes up. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. There is no, also, please speak into the microphone slowly, clearly, and loudly. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light at the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your presentation. Yellow indicates you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red obviously indicates that your presentation time is complete. So with that, I'm going to ask if we have anyone that would like to speak on any other item that is not related to the budget or the CIP. If you would like to speak now, you can please come down to the podium.
Paul Wodowsky, Eight Picket Lane. I want to clarify for the public what an HOA is, because if you watch a replay of this afternoon, you might be misinformed. An HOA by definition is a Virginia corporation, and in order to dissolve a Virginia corporation, you need two-thirds of the membership. That means if you live in the Gable subdivision, where there's 25 houses, you need to be one of 17 people to sign my petition, and then we can dissolve the HOA. A quorum is a misnomenclature inside of a Virginia corporation, and in order to contact all owners, Stafford County has a real estate appraisal system, and if you look at my property in the Griffiths Whitewater, it'll give you Eight Picket Lane. So you can contact the real owner, even if they are renting or living there. So now you've been duly educated. Gerrymandering has been discussed from the I-95 and US-1 perspective, which are the vertical lines in the county. Today, I want to make you all aware that there are five vertical lines in the county. Chronicle takes up 55 square miles of the 280 square miles. 610, probably the most populated area, especially in the last 20 years, from 61,000 to 128,961 in 2010. The 61,000 was in 1990. Then you have 630, which is where the Divergent Diamond is coming. Excuse me. Sorry. 627 is the next east-west road, and of course, 17. Any highway below 17, if you look at Virginia history, you'll see Ferry Farm was part of King George County at one time. Guess what? George Washington must have been gerrymandered before my time. Also, I want to make the public aware that our public schools are being used by churches. We saw what happened to the Virginia Christian Academy. It couldn't make it as a private school. If you watched the school board meeting, they thought it was only 10.1 million, but when you're a lawyer, what's the difference between 10.1 million and 10.6 million? It's just a half million dollars. I guess that's the end of my time. See you at the CIP.
Thank you. So it looks like I have a couple speaker cards that are not related to the budget. Teresa Bowers.
Good evening, Stafford Board of Supervisors and County Administration and Staff. My name is Teresa Bowers, and I'm the Director of the Senior Visitors Program at Mental Health America of Fredericksburg and a Stafford County resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Our Senior Visitors Program is the one program we host that may be the most familiar to you. The clients we serve are seniors like Glowvina. She says to you, "I am 90 years old. I live alone in my own home. My daughter referred me to the Senior Visitors Program in 2007. My daughter lives in DC but is not able to visit as often as we would like. I am no longer able to drive. Before I had a volunteer visitor, I often felt lonely and isolated. I was matched with Beth in 2009. Beth gets me out in the community to run errands and have lunch or see a movie. Beth helps me stay active, and I no longer feel lonely. Beth gives me something to look forward to." Our Senior Visitors Program provides a trained volunteer who makes a free weekly in-home visit for socialization and support services. Currently, we support 113 senior clients in our program and approximately 70... seventeen percent of those clients are Stafford County residents. I can't emphasize enough the impact that this program has on the lives of seniors who were very lonely and felt disconnected from their community before being enrolled in the Senior Visitors Program. The seniors that you represent and that we serve, thank you for your continued funding. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you for your support in the proposed budget for our mental health helpline and suicide prevention education programs. Our helpline is another free service at Mental Health America of Fredericksburg that can be used by anyone of any age who is seeking more information about mental health resources in our community. We maintain the only list of local licensed and certified mental health providers, in addition to local support groups and other mental health resources. Our staff is often the first person a helpline caller is telling about their depression or suicidal feelings or anxiety. Having this helpline is critical when there is so much in the news about mental health these days. Our suicide prevention education program started in two thousand and fourteen in Spotsylvania County Schools, where we taught high school freshmen the signs and symptoms of depression and suicidal ideation in themselves and in their friends, and more importantly, what to do about it, how to seek help and who to go to for help. We've been able to expand that program to include seventh-grade students and now serve Spotsylvania County and Fredericksburg City teens, and I'm proud to say this year we've expanded into Stafford County. We know that when we change minds by providing mental health resources and support, we change and often save lives. Thank you for helping to make Stafford a county where residents are receiving the mental health resources that they need. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak to the board on something that is not related to the budget? Okay. All right. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our county administrator, Tom Foley, for a brief presentation on our budget, and then we'll go into comments from the audience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Start off with a brief overview of the proposed budget before public comment. The details of this budget have been advertised online and in the paper for a number of weeks, so we're going to make it very brief tonight so we can get to the public comments. The theme of this budget was addressing growth and positioning ourselves for the future. Both of these really focused on addressing the impact of growth in Stafford County in regards to the impacts we're currently facing. Thank you, Mrs. Bowers.
Thank you.
The growth that we're dealing with from past growth, as well as the things that we see on the horizon that we need to position ourselves for. So tonight, we're just going to talk quickly about the highlights, a little bit about the advertised tax rate, and some of the things that continue to be under consideration by the Board of Supervisors before they complete the process. The big drivers in addressing growth in this budget are related to education and public safety impacts. As you see before you, a list of items in terms of education, funding for growth, and also for additional priorities for the school board, also a significant increase in our mandated services for the Children's Services Act, which provides private day-school placements, and also some initiatives that we've put in place in the public schools to try to reduce some of the costs for special-needs students. In total, our education expenses make up or utilize about fifty-seven percent of the growth that we're experiencing in the budget this year, so it certainly is a big driver in terms of addressing growth. The second-largest area is public safety, where you see five additional sheriff's deputies proposed, a new engine crew, which totals twelve, new staff, hazardous duty pay to meet the market in terms of our retirement benefits, and also support to promote our volunteer fire and rescue program. These are the two major drivers in terms of addressing the growth that we're feeling right now. As we look to the future and try to position ourselves better for that future, you can see that there are investments in a two-percent salary increase for our county employees, as well as some money set aside to try to address targeted market increases for employees who've fallen behind the market. There are a total of ten non-public safety and utility positions in this budget to address some of the impacts that we're feeling. A classification and compensation study, again, to keep us up to market so that we're able to retain quality staff. Our utilities fund is also experiencing some things related to growth, and therefore, we've proposed ten utility positions. Seven of those ten are actually revenue-neutral, meaning they're not going to cost us additional funds. They're actually going to either save us money or generate new revenues to help pay for them. An innovation fund to promote innovation in the county and investing in our training program are two of the other things that are related to positioning ourselves for the future as it relates to performance. And finally, in terms of highlights in this proposed budget, some of this positioning for the future, it makes some investments, in particular, into system improvements, economic development, and our capital program. The advertised tax rate is at ninety-nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. You can see that we have a reassessment this year on the average home price of about three-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars. That generates a tax bill, on average, of just under three-thousand dollars. New construction growth is helping us in terms of funding some services, and you can see the two-year reassessment that's reflected in this budget shows an average of about a nine-percent increase in residential values and five percent in commercial. And you can see the graph on the right, which basically says that the tax rate has not gone up over this period that you see back to two thousand and twelve. The board did advertise a tax rate at ninety-nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, rather than the originally proposed ninety-six-point-five cent, and the reason for that is some significant challenges that the county is facing beyond what was in the proposed budget. Some are actually new proposals and some that are longstanding. The board wanted to give themselves the opportunity to respond to some of these other needs, so the ninety-nine-cent tax rate was designed to try to create the opportunity for the board to consider some of the things that you see before you. Since the budget was originally proposed, the school board has requested that we have sheriff's deputies in all of our elementary schools totaling roughly one-point-six million dollars, which is the value of one penny on our tax rate. The school budget request is not fully funded, so it gives them the opportunity to consider that further. Transportation needs in the county are no secret to anyone. The board has talked about that and is going to further consider whether some more investment in transportation is important. And we have two looming significant capital projects on the horizon, the need for the construction of a new courthouse and the need for a new elementary and high school. The board, during the process, at least some members have suggested that we should look more closely at our competitive pay as well. All of these things are driving the board's further consideration of the tax rate. A special, separate hearing will be held, as you see on this chart before you, on April twenty-fourth, specifically related to the real estate and other property tax rates. And then we have certainly a bit more process before that, including a budget work session on April seventeenth on things in general, and then a specific additional work session with the school board specifically related to the capital program and also some of their operating needs. This is what we have before us in terms of the budget process, planning to complete after tonight on April twenty-fourth. With that, Madam Chair, I turn it back to you for the public hearing.
Okay. At this point in time, I'm going to open the public hearing for item number ten. This is finance and budget. Consider the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen proposed budget and the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen dash two thousand and twenty-eight capital improvement program, also known as our CIP. So with the public -- excuse me. With the public hearing being open, the first speaker I have is Janet Gulickson from Germana Community College.
Thank you. Good to see you all again. I don't know. I think it's on, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I placed a folder on your desk to give you just some background about what Germana has done for Stafford County and what we hope to do in the future. This is kind of like our report card back to you. First, I want to thank you for all the support you've given Germana over the last years. It is substantial, and it is appreciated, and it makes us feel very comfortable in serving the students of Stafford County. About thirty percent of our students come from Stafford County. You'll see that on the second slide. Most of them are typical college-age students. We have a few more women than men. We should worry about that, by the way, as a society. We need to get our young men into college as quickly as we can. And we are serving students both online and hybrid. Most of our students are general education majors, business majors, or are interested in science, by the way, and these are Stafford County students. So whatever the K-12 schools are doing, they're doing it well, and we're pretty familiar with that. I'll explain about that in a second. If you turn to page nine, that's one of the issues I really want to point out to you, and that's the new Barbara Drew Freed Center that will be opening with a soft opening in the summer and a hard launch in the fall. We are very excited about this. This triples our capacity in this service area. We have classrooms, computer labs, office space, study halls. We'll have libraries there, health assessment, clinical skills laboratory. We are hoping that we will serve Stafford County students without them ever having to drive to Fredericksburg. That's our plan. If you look at slide ten and put on a couple sunglasses, I think, to read that one, you'll see the outlay of our eighteen-thousand square feet. I want to point out particularly the lower right-hand side. That was not in the original plan, but we decided, at really kind of a risk, a little bit of a gamble, to build that out and bring our nursing program here. So our nursing program will be offered in Stafford beginning in December. That whole facility that you see in the lower right-hand corner of that entire facility, which is ours, we will offer workforce training there and health education programs. The major programs that we plan to offer here are cybersecurity, nursing, business, and general education transfer. We are so excited, we can hardly stand it. We also plan to expand workforce education in Stafford. I don't think we do as much as we need to, and we're looking forward to that. You'll see those items mentioned on page twelve. Ideally, though, our long-term goal, and we're going to work toward it, is to build the permanent center on the land that the county has given us, and we are marketing like crazy to build this temporary center so we run out of room and are able to help meet the needs of Stafford County in the future. We thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions, my business card is on the right. Please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gulickson. The next speaker is Julie Perham.
My name is Julie Perham. I live at four-fifteen Decatur Road in the Griffiths Whitewater -- excuse me, Griffiths Whitewater District. I teach at Hampton Oaks Elementary School. I'm the parent of two Brookpoint graduates and the grandparent of a current student -- excuse me, Margaret Brand Elementary School. So you can see that I have a vested interest in Stafford County and a strong desire to see it become a great place to live and raise children. Recently, I was on Facebook, that pop bed of respectful dialogue, and the particular page belonged to the Stafford Education Association. The discussion, as you might guess, revolved around school funding and employee salaries. During this discussion, one poster said that, quote, "Teachers need to quit whining about salaries," end quote. While I took offense, since I never whine, the comment, along with others made from everybody, from parents to central office personnel about looking out for children instead of our own pocketbooks, inspired me to talk about facts and not feelings. Fact: Stafford County is one of the wealthiest counties in the country, yet our per pupil spending is well below the state average. Even with that, we are the largest fully accredited division in Virginia. Fact: The percentage of total budget devoted to the school system has decreased for many years and has only recently begun to stabilize. At the same time, we've had an influx of more and more students who require specialized programs. Fact: The growth that we're so proud of is overwhelming our schools. When you look at program capacity, most of our buildings are at or near capacity already, and there is no relief in sight. Even with class size caps in place, the class sizes in many buildings are too big, and they're only getting worse. Fact: Paraprofessionals, bus drivers, and other classified employees are woefully underpaid, at or near the bottom of our famous comparison districts. These dedicated employees deserve not only our gratitude and respect, but a living wage. Fact: Many of our teachers do not live in Stafford County. Why? Because they can't afford to live here, the community in which they teach that they serve. Many are working two jobs because they can't support themselves on what they make in Stafford, and at the same time, the requirements and expectations increase exponentially every year. When I was a young teacher, a wise person told me to never forget that teacher working conditions are student learning conditions. What kind of learning conditions do we want for the children of Stafford County? Do we want each classroom staffed with qualified teachers or long-term subs? What's better for kids? A teacher exhausted by working two jobs or one who can focus all her attention on planning, engaging, and relevant lessons? I truly believe that we are at a tipping point in public education, and it's time for all of us to step up and do what's necessary to give Stafford County children a world-class education. For these reasons, I strongly support the proposed ninety-nine-cent tax rate, and that is a fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perham. Ann Klockner?
I'm Ann Klockner, and I'm the Executive Director at Legal Aid Works. We've been serving Stafford County since nineteen-seventy-three. I come here tonight to thank you sincerely for your previous support and to explain to you a little bit about why that makes such a difference. We're asking for level funding. We understand all too well the tough choices that tighten all county budgets. Our four full-time attorneys and one part-time attorney in our Fredericksburg office cover five counties and fifteen courts. We represent low-income people who need an attorney in civil legal matters. There's absolutely no right to a free lawyer when you're poor and you have a civil legal problem. We help victims of domestic violence get civil protective orders. We help people who have been illegally denied their unemployment benefits, and we help resolve landlord-tenant and foreclosure disputes. We're the only agency providing this service to your constituents. In your county, there are six-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-one eligible low-income persons who could qualify for our service. As an outside agency, we behave like an inside agency by helping county governments in three important ways. We take the strain off your social services safety net by lifting clients out of poverty, by obtaining enforceable court orders of child and spousal support, as well as unemployment benefits that the clients would not otherwise have won without our legal representation. We help the county court system run efficiently by helping those who can't afford an attorney, those who represent themselves slow the court system down considerably, and we aid law enforcement by working with victims of domestic violence to secure enforceable protective orders. In the last fiscal year, three-hundred-and-forty-seven of your residents were assisted by our five attorneys, including several critical domestic violence cases. We obtained seventy-five thousand dollars in annualized child and spousal support and avoided nine thousand dollars in unlawful fees, fines, and debts. When you total the amount of real, measurable financial help we give the residents of your county compared to what you give us, that's an excellent return on your investment. I have brochures with me tonight so that you can provide good constituent services by referring appropriate residents of this county to our office. I really appreciate your support, and when you start your meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, you're putting your money where your pledge is when you support justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Deborah Levy?
My name is Deborah Levy. I live at four-Larkwood Court, and I own a small business in North Stafford, but I'm not here this evening for that purpose. I'm here representing the Rappahannock Big Brothers and Big Sisters Organization, and I would like to thank the honorable ladies and gentlemen of the county board and the esteemed county administrator, as well as the staff for the privilege of speaking here tonight. Rappahannock Big Brothers and Big Sisters is asking the Board of Supervisors to approve a proposed funding level of six thousand dollars. This will help us continue to recruit, interview, and enroll children, and it will also help us recruit, interview, enroll, and conduct background checks on mentors, as well as matching children with those mentors. It also helps us provide regularly supervised contact by professionals with mentors and mentees. Big Brothers Big Sisters is an active member of the Community Collaborative for Youth and Families, led by Stafford County's Director of Community Engagement and Human Services, Donna Kraus. The collaborative works to improve the mental and social health of children, which has a -- which has a positive economic impact on our entire community. Big Brothers Big Sisters is proud to partner with Stafford in pursuit of these goals. Through the work of the collaborative over the last year, we have learned a lot about the science of adverse child experiences, and this was quite an education for me. Mary Washington Healthcare and the newly created Be Well Council, along with the collaborative, will be hosting a community workshop and town meeting this month, in fact, about this important topic. In recently published studies, it has been proven that the adverse experiences that a child has fundamentally changes the structure of their brain and is a powerful predictor of physical and mental health problems as an adult. So the work that we do by providing children with mentors isn't just nice and heartwarming, although it's that, too. But the latest research on childhood adversity reveals that the single most important factor that children need in order to develop resilience is at least one stable and committed relationship with a supportive adult. So our work is simple, yet it's deeply impactful. Our mentors model responsible behavior and encourage positive life choices, and they help children develop the protective factors and behavioral assets that they need for a productive life. We also partner with Stafford County Schools and Teachers to provide mentoring. For example, the guidance counselors at Wide Water Elementary School have appreciated the support of Big Brothers Big Sisters in bringing mentors to the school for children who need additional support. We welcome and appreciate the opportunity to partner with you. Our cost to service Stafford County children is over $50,000 a year. We hope that you agree that the $6,000 in funding is a sound investment, both in our county's children today and in their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff- Jeffrey Trigger?
Hello. My name is Jeffrey Trigger, and I live at 518 Clint Lane. Tonight, the Board is discussing the budget and the tax rate for the next fiscal year. I know it's a task, because there are so many departments and county necessities that have to be examined when creating a budget. However, I'm asking the Board to ensure a tax rate plan that works to retain educators within the county. Stafford County, due to location, will always have a semi-revolving door with younger educators, as oftentimes they are the spouses of military members. However, the number of new students to the county increased by 647 students over the last year. At this rate, we are essentially adding a new high school of students to the county every three years. Our inability to retain teachers has led to unfilled positions, only assuring us of larger class sizes. When you have classes of 30-plus students and several of those students with 504 and IEP needs, inevitably, you are harming the learning potential for those students. Case in point, last year, only 30% of my students came in reading at grade level. This year, that number was 40%. Are we saying that that's the best this county can do? Educators also have to make personal decisions. I'm lucky. As a single person with no children, I do not have to make many difficult decisions about my family. However, when salary stretches the limit of livability, oftentimes educators have to make the difficult decision to travel north for more money, some of whom give up registered years of experience just to make ends meet, or they may decide to get a second job. This also has an impact on students, as the educator spends more time away from their own children or the hours lost to a second job impacting what an educator can do for lesson planning and grading. Stafford County must consider what is best for our students. Long-term retention of educators will, in time, work to reduce class sizes and improve the wealth of knowledge within our buildings. I know this can't be fixed in one session or one year, but let's take the steps to work for funding a long-term solution and fund the 99 cent tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta? Thank you. Schreiber. Your printing was good. My reading was not so good.
Thank you. I'm Roberta Schreiber. I live at 103 Legend Drive, and I am the Acting President of SERVE at this time. I won't take up much of your time. Mostly, I wanted to say thank you for the support you've shown to SERVE. We are deeply grateful for it. In fact, I think we got a check today. And I just wanted to ask you to please continue, because we need it desperately, and our children need it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Nordine?
Good evening. My name is Catherine Nordine. I live at 47 Reserve Way in Hartwood. I would like to discuss the 3.7 million dollar increase to our school budget. I have three children in this county, and I apologize for not coming with a more prepared speech, but this was quick notice and in the middle of spring break. Well, I love our school system, and I think it's phenomenal. I have noticed a decrease in the last several years. Our kid's schools are packed. 11 of our 17 schools, our elementary schools, will be closed at the beginning of next year. Moncur Elementary, upon opening, will be a closed elementary school. I have a kindergartner. I have a third grader, and I have a soon-to-be sixth grader. And every single year, our classes get more and more packed. And here's the thing, building continues. Our Hartwood area, where I live, every single elementary school is at capacity next year, every single one. Margaret Brent, Rocky Run, Hartwood Elementary, and we're running into problems. We are 60 students over capacity daily. Our bathrooms are shut down, and our water system is always sketchy. And so I just wonder where the end comes into play. Our teachers are underfunded. Our security is lacking. I haven't seen any of you guys at the school board meetings, but the parents have made these very loud and lengthy meetings. That is $2.6 million to add one deputy to every school in Stafford County. That's not included in 3.7 million. I would ask you to reconsider how much we are spending in our schools, because they're important. It's what brought my family here. It's what brings families here. I didn't move to Woodbridge. I didn't move to Fredericksburg. Stafford County schools are amazing, and they're declining. They are declining quickly, and people are seeing it. So we need to put our money where our mouth is, and we need to start building schools today, and we need to start putting money into our education, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Heidi? Heidi Freeman?
Hi, my name is Heidi Freeman. I live at 109 Nina Cove. Good evening, Stafford Board of Supervisors. I apologize as I wasn't prepared. At the last minute, I decided to come and speak. Our representative is currently working her second job. I'm a certified English teacher, currently working at one of our schools. I'm certified in ESAL as well. I teach regular English classes and inclusion. I also have a master's degree. I'm currently thinking about leaving Stafford County Public Schools for the things that have been mentioned before me talking today. Coming here, I took a $9,000 pay cut. I've seen the teacher turnover rate to be high. In our school alone, in the last two years, it's been 50%. I'm not only concerned as a teacher, but also as a parent. I have three of my own children attending Stafford County Public Schools and two stepchildren attending as well. I've seen new teachers come in who are not qualified to teach. One example would be a teacher who had to leave earlier this year because she had competency issues. I see a lot of teachers going to Prince William County. I've heard that we are going to lose three-fourths of our math department this year because of pay. We're losing quality veteran educators. They still will stay and live in Stafford, but they will go and they will work elsewhere. I've seen long-term subs come in who are not qualified. My daughter, who is in advanced math program, she's on her fourth teacher right now. They had three subs who were in there. I think we can do better for our children. Thus, I support an increased tax rate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Teri Welborn?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I'm Teri Welborn, 131 Enon Road in the Falmouth District. I've been a bus driver for 23 years here in Stafford. I'm the chairperson for the SCA Transportation ESP Caucus. I'm here tonight to speak about the tax rate. I'd like to see it stay at the 99 cent proposed rate. I know that as a conservative board and a conservative county, you don't want to raise taxes, and I'd like to keep them the same or even lower the tax rate. But there comes a point when taxes are too low, and you can't function, and you can't pay your bills. Times are tough, so we don't want to make it tougher for our citizens by raising their taxes, is what we keep hearing. Well, I have news for you. Times have been tough for the last 10 years and are just going to get tougher for your bus drivers and teachers if they can't earn a living wage here in Stafford County. For years, this board has tried to keep taxes the same or has even lowered them to try to please Stafford's conservative base. With the cost of living going up, insurance rates skyrocketing, school employees are having a tough time making ends meet. Unless this board decides that they're going to do something different nowadays, as Mr. Dudenheffer said, and keeps the tax rate at 99 cents, which, by the way, will be about $221 a household, school employees are going to continue to seek employment elsewhere. As it is now, a large percentage of Stafford's bus drivers, monitors, and teachers cannot afford to live in the county that they work in. When my husband died two years ago, that left me with one income, mine, as a school bus driver in Stafford. My paycheck is barely $1,600 a month for most months. After bills and basic expenses, I have barely $200 for groceries. I'm not the only one trying to make it on a single income. We have several single parents trying to raise their families on a bus driver or monitor salary. For these reasons, I implore you to use reason and common sense, set the tax rate at 99 cents so that the county can afford to pay their bus drivers, monitors, and teachers a living wage. If not, I fear that the quality of our school system will start to decline, and you will lose valuable veteran bus drivers and teachers when our parents really want to trade a few cents in taxes for a quality bus driver or teacher. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teri. Justin Huser?
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. I appreciate you giving me time to speak tonight. My name's Justin Huser. I live in 18 Liberty Knolls Drive. And me and my wife moved down here roughly three years ago, and the main reason was friends' encouragement, but also because at that time, the schools were performing exceptionally well. The areas of Stafford that we looked at, all the schools were eight, nine, and 10 on grade scores, as far as the test scores. I applaud all the teachers that have spoken earlier. I want to reference, if you don't mind, a teacher that left last summer that was a very well-respected teacher at Colonial Forge High School has moved to Colgan High School in Prince William County. It's Breaking the Will is the blog, and I think this perfectly sums it up. Mark Twain once wrote, "Facts are stubborn, but statistics are pliable." Recently, I read an article in the Freelance Star that used statistics to show not as many teachers in Stafford County are leaving in order to pursue jobs in Northern Virginia. I found this quite surprising, because I'm one of many Stafford County teachers who are leaving the county this year. While I did not enter into my profession with the expectation of getting rich, the differences between Stafford County and Prince William County have become overwhelming. However, my reason for leaving is not solely monetary. One of the main reasons I'm leaving is due to trust. The fact that Stafford County schools advertise a pay scale based off years of experience, yet they fail to honor the very document they created. My loyalty and devotion to the county has always been unquestioned. In fact, I never thought I would leave my job at Colonial Forge. In college, I had hoped to earn a career as a high school history teacher and teach in the same school for the entirety of my career. As recently as May of this year, I had no interest in leaving my position. I had never even considered applying for another position in my 13 years in this county. That is until I received my contract this year. Once again, the Board of Supervisors has underfunded the school system, this despite the county experiencing unprecedented growth and despite being recognized recently as the eighth wealthiest county in the nation. The contract I received in May was the exact amount as my previous year's contract and did not reflect the additional year I had served. I was devastated. Although the difference in pay should only have been around $800 this year, the county once again failed to acknowledge the years I've given them. Unfortunately, this pattern has become the norm. When I first met our superintendent and he shared his ideas with me, how he would hope to impact our county, I was impressed and believed that he was exactly what our county needed for the past several years. I've stood by him and defended him, even when my colleagues criticized him. I was glad when he accomplished getting us off the step system where the school board voted as to whether or not to award us for another year of experience. The system left us several years behind our actual years of experience, which most of us found very frustrating. It had teachers trying to climb a ladder without any rungs. When I received my contract, my faith in Dr. Benson was shattered, and I realized the ladder still had no rungs. I'm running out of time. I'd like to reference any teachers currently in the room to please look at Breaking the Will. It was submitted on July 25, 2017, and I think it details what you guys are feeling as well as could possibly be written. I have a three and a five-year-old child. I'm fortunate enough to make pretty good money working for the federal government in DC. It's gotten so bad, I'm thinking about moving to Richmond, Virginia, and commuting to DC one day a week and working from home the other four days. I feel that serious and passionate about it. I've met with Holly Hazard, the former chairwoman. I paid for her dinner, and we had a nice discussion. We agreed and disagreed about many things. I know I've gone over my time, but I really want the county to compete with the other attractive counties, Western Park, Prince William County, Loudoun and such. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elaine Callender?
Good evening. Elaine Callender, 622 Lancaster Street in the Falmouth District. Good to be here among such great presenters tonight. I think you should raise my taxes. I think we've got too many needs in this county. All you have to do is look at our roads. But we know the situation with the schools, and there's, I guess, one elementary school being proposed, but I know there is greater need in that, in terms of school construction, than you have in the capital improvement plan. I think it's great when the partner agencies come out and tell us about what they're doing for people. There is such a need in the community in so many ways, and it's good to hear how they are helping. I think if you invest in people, you have less incarceration. You need less police. There is so much more that we could do than we are doing. And so I want to recommend that you raise your taxes, that you fund the needs of social service agencies and our own Department of Social Services. I'd like to compliment the county administrator for recognizing the deficits in the Department of Social Services. When I heard his presentation a few weeks ago, it was the first time in all the years that I've come here for budget hearings and so forth that the county administrator spelled out what the deficits were in the Department of Social Services. I also heard the judge speak about the drug court and the critical need for a drug court in Stafford, and she's absolutely right, and we need to make that investment. For people from North Stafford who are participating in the drug court to have to go to Spotsylvania on a regular basis just does not make sense, and it's not practical. So anyway, I come from a school system in Illinois where the public was asked regularly to vote on bond referendums to fund their schools. Never once was a bond referendum defeated. We had a fabulous school system. I'm going back this summer for a reunion, and I'm reminded of what a great education we were provided because the citizens and the government supported public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callender. Is there anyone else in the board chambers that would like to speak to the Board on our budget or our capital improvement plan?
Paul Wildoski, 8 Pickle Lane. It is great to have a budget, however...
"It is great to have a budget, however, it is more important to have a budget that's great." Wow. Addressing Growth. Welcome, County Administrator. If you haven't heard my speeches, the county's grown every 20 years. 60 to 80, 70 to 90, 80 to 2000, 90 to 2010. 2010, 128,961. So don't go overboard with five more sheriffs when you're not funding education, education, education. I question those 12 other positions in public safety. I'm all for public safety. I've been to engineering school, see something, say something. We said it a long time ago when we built bridges. You know, I love the speaker about facts, but statistics say it all. Make them bring you, all the years, we have them, of the enrollments of this school, and let's look at the variance in the statistics. Now, my biggest heartburn in your budget is 10 utility positions. I don't get a county water and sewer bill, I don't care about me. I care about those teachers who live in those properties that I own, that are making ends meet, and that's who I'm fighting for. And I don't care that seven of the positions are neutral. You need to get the utilities into a CIP. The utilities has not been in the comp plan for 12 years. You're so far behind about what's going on, it's about time that you walk the walk and quit talking the talk. I- I've been such a big fan of education. When I ran for public office in 2015, I had a major agenda because I saw students sitting out the Porter Library, getting the internet to see what was going on, and we should have internet for everyone in this whole county. There's no excuse for it. It's like my grandmother said, everyone should have a telephone. Even the farmer in Hartwood has a telephone. So it's about time that you start modernizing and start thinking like 21st century leaders, and you've heard me say this before, there's no such thing as issues, it's all about opportunities.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
Hi, Madam Chair, Vice Chairman, and all Board members. My name is Andy Hayes. I live at 85 Cascade Lane in the Hartwood District of Stafford County. I am a 30-plus-year veteran of Stafford County. I am also Stafford County Schools. I'm also the president of the Stafford County Education Association. First of all, I want to say that it was, uh, it was difficult, this is spring break, and it was difficult to come tonight because of so many obvious reasons. Every year, we speak about needing more budget monies in our schools, but I want to say that after coming tonight and listening, what a heartening expression I have deep inside. Those Germana students come from Stafford County schools, those people that need legal aid also attend our schools, those big brothers and sisters are part of our schools, those are investments, and those investments pay off. About two weeks ago, I was at a meeting here, and Mr. Dudenheffer mentioned that in six years' time, almost nothing seems to have changed, and he was referring, I think, to the budget battles and the debates between the school board and your Board. And I couldn't agree anymore when I heard that, um, tonight, that it was about six years ago that the last time that the, uh, the rate, tax rate had increased, that would be about six years that he had slipped away to work at the General Assembly. These services and these jobs of your employees, things have not changed sadly in six years. We need some steps, and you, as a Board, acknowledged that a couple of weeks ago, that things really have changed here in Stafford. The growth of this county cannot sustain without some infrastructural needs that have to be addressed. I am willing, as a citizen, to pay 99 cents for the increased tax, and so is my wife, and I'm almost certain that all employees of Stafford County, including the employees of this county at the, uh, public services departments, they would also, because it's an investment. It will pay off, and this county is too great to see it dissolve to where it doesn't need to be. I thank you for your time, your services, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Would anyone else like to speak to the Board? Okay, if no one else would like to speak to the Board at this point in time, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board. Would anyone like to make any comments regarding the public hearing? Hmm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you can't. Yes, Ms. Mauer?
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. As you well know, we have a lot of needs here in Stafford County, and I do appreciate all of you taking your time to come and speak to us. I heard a couple of comments about this being done during spring break. I can assure you that was not by design. We have a very strict calendar that we have to follow in order to get our bills out. To all of the Stafford County taxpayers, and our Treasurer Laura Rudy here has, uh, she's- she's got a calendar she has to keep, but please let everybody know that this isn't the end of the discussion. We still have a tax rate hearing, and to email us, to call us, and we have several other public hearings on this topic as well as work sessions. So thank you very much for coming tonight, really appreciate your heartfelt comments.
Just to echo, um, I'm thankful to the people who came, also that we had a, a bevy of emails throughout the day, and I too never connected this meeting with spring break, which is, I know, rather ironic, but do know that your input is appreciated, there is many more, there are many more steps to the process so that you can come back many more times to finish your thought. And we look forward to getting the input as we move forward. There's, there's a vast number of documents we have to weed through, and I know many of you are going through them as well, so thank you.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
I'm not going to talk specifically about the budget, I just, I know the schools, especially the high schools, and Mountain View High School had a tragedy last Thursday night, and I know how that impacts children because I've kind of been through that, and I- I've seen how it affects families, it affects schools, it affects the administration, it affects everyone, so my heart goes out to you. I know, I know what many of you are going for, I don't know if any here are from Mountain View High School, I plan on trying to get out there, but you do have a tough, you have a tough job. I, you know, it's a, I don't even know how to compare it. I've never stood in a classroom except I've heard to many, many friends and teachers over the years who've come in and left the profession for all different kinds of reasons. So I want you to know for a fact that we spend a lot of time talking about what the needs in the county are, and I think every single person up here is, is conscientious about where we need to go, they, um, they want to do what's right for everyone. We have, we have plenty of needs, a lot of them we've lost the bubble on over the last 20 years because of growth. We're trying to get a hold of that, that's a whole nother aspect of everything that we're, we're trying to do here. So times have changed in Stafford County, I think you'll see some of that here coming up, so thank you very much.
And I'd just like to say thank you also for everybody coming out tonight and, and speaking from your heart, and what's happening to you and your families, and what's happening in the schools. I raised three children here in three of the oldest schools, I might add, in Stafford County, in South Stafford, and they got a phenomenal education. It wasn't because of the buildings, it was because of the teachers inside. You know, when they come back and they run to their elementary school, they don't run back to the building, they run back to that PE teacher that motivated them, or whatever teacher it may be. So, and I guess for me, coming from the school division, since I was on the school board, and everybody up here on this dais knows, you know, our community is, is molded around our schools, and that is why people move here. That's why we moved here 20 years ago. So we all know and recognize that it, it is a huge investment in our community, but it's, it is an investment that pays many, many dividends, and I don't think there's anybody in this room that would disagree with that. So, but as, as members did say, we have a lot of needs to look at in our county, and it is the job or the responsibility of this Board of Supervisors, and I can just tell you, we're all working very hard and drilling down to a lot of the details, the data, and trying to make the best decision that we can on behalf of all the taxpayers and all the needs that everybody has. And, and sometimes it's not fun conversation with our colleagues, we might just say, well, I agree that we disagree, and that's okay. But we, we are trying to make the right decision on behalf of everybody, and I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight and, and speaking whatever you had in your heart and, and things that affect you at home and during the day while you're in the classroom. So with that, this concludes the April 3 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and I call this meeting adjourned.